Related to the Royston water supply options report, so motion received. The course of action of the district would be a start.
Move.
So, on the seat then, all is in favor. Motion's carried. And the report from our director of finance lays out various options to consider. If you have questions for the director of finance or for the C A O, this could be a good time, otherwise we could proceed with recommendations. So, go ahead, councillor.
I have a bunch of questions, but any means...
Yep.
One needs to know. The cost was eight point four thousand dollars, but that can include the upgrades, right, to the, or the new facility? The treatment plant, if you can believe.
Correct.
So, do we have any idea what that would cost, for them?
Director of Finance. That will be built into our water rates. And so, the bulk water rate is currently sixty-six cents per cubic meter, and we expect if the water system is able to get a good, a very generous federal provincial infrastructure grant, that could rise to a dollar. Or it could be, if there's a less generous grant, be in the dollar thirty range, or as much as a dollar fifty. So, it really depends on the great unknown, which is, how much is the regional district going to be able to secure in infrastructure grants? But that won't be an upfront capital cost. That will be implemented through water rates, because the debt financing that the regional district does for the project, and the cost of paying that debt annually, gets recovered through water rates.
Okay. So, I guess, the initiative is coming from the village of Cumberland to the regional district to explore this. And I guess, my question is, would it then have to go to a referendum, or what would it, what would happen?
Director of Finance?
As a former regional district director of finance, I can assure you that anything that involves an increase in, a substantial increase in rates, and, and the, and more importantly, the assumption of debt, will require voter assent. Now, whether that would be a referendum, or an alternative assent process, that's for the regional district to decide.
Thank you.
Councillor.
I have one thing. Just in, in reading through this, it seems to me that the number one option, seems to be the best option, and what I'm thinking of here is that, and maybe somebody can help me out here, but if Cumberland were to hook onto this system, and they went with the number one option, would that allow them to shut down their current water system, which is causing us all grief up in the hell on Perseverance Creek? I mean, there could be a valley-wide solution to a whole bunch of issues here. Now, I think that that would cost Cumberland more money, but I'm not sure, I understand that they're applying for some grants right now on water, and it would seem to me that the province should maybe be looking at this and saying, hey, here's a bigger solution that solves a lot of different issues, rather than just this one little issue.
And this is obviously beyond the scope of this particular report.
Yeah.
Certainly a good point. C A O, we have any comments?
Well, the, the recommendation number two, which speaks to option one...
Yep.
Is focused on a regional solution. So, we've looked at that, in terms of what the province has asked several times, for us to look at a regional solution for these types of services. So, that's a portion of the cost that the village would have to pay. There is also the, the distribution system within, that they would have to fix, but there is, there is some potential benefit.
Yeah.
As well as it helps them meet the four-three-two-one standard that they would have to meet if they were part of our system, but, you know, again, there are additional costs that they would have to pay.
Right. But, but in the long run, if there's that issue up on Perseverance Creek with the clay in the water, and we sent a formal complaint in on that, to get, to get some action from them, God knows what the bill could be there, but some of them were as high as, I think, thirty and forty million dollars, to mitigate that damage out there. If that were the case, then this could be a more equitable solution for them. I, I know we're off topic here a little bit, but...
Yeah, I mean, we're really talking about... No, true enough. It talks about how we're going to deal with Royston, and their water, local water, sorry, water local service area, and they're going to, obviously have their water coming from Cumberland's stock by the end of 2017, so we have to kind of deal with that issue for the benefit of Royston. Cumberland's issue is, of course, entirely separate.
Yeah.
All right, councillor McKen, and our...
To clarify for, for members of council and the public, if, if recommendation two is the best option, but Cumberland does not want to be involved with it at this point, is there a timeline involved there? And if there is a timeline, and Cumberland's not willing to change in that regard, would not recommendation three be the better option?
C A O?
Yes, and recommendation three speaks to that. In anticipation that Cumberland wouldn't be interested in participating in that first option, that, that recommendation number three is the best way to go.
So, when will that be clear?
I think it's already clear.
Not by, now, certainly by the end of 2017?
Yeah. Cumberland has, has made it clear that they're not interested in the regional solution, that they are developing their own water system, and what improvements are necessary. However, that doesn't preclude us from continuing to look at the option, and, you know, perhaps Cumberland will hear about it as, as a potential solution. However, recommendation number three would be the preferred route for a new water line to go in, and it would be a smaller diameter line, that would help service the Royston water, to service here.
So, for the public's sake, and for my sake, when will that be clear, that we'll be moving to, in that direction?
Well, as, as the mayor pointed out, Cumberland has given the regional district notice that the Royston area has to be off by the end of 2017, so it's, it's within the coming year that, that will be made quite evident, and, and design and, and construction has to commence in a relatively quick timeframe.
Thank you. Councillor McKen? Yeah, I'll pass, I think it's been answered a few times. Anybody else?
I just want, is that realistic, timeline, for construction, to move at light speed?
Glaciers.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. That, that'll be for the regional district to...
To figure out.
To figure out at this stage.
All right, so, we've received the correspondence, so we could, if council wishes that committee here to move recommendation, the second recommendation, I guess, which is to that the town expressed preference for servicing the Royston area through construction of the main identified in option one.
I'll move that.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all is in favor. Motion's carried. And of course, we need to also move then, the third recommendation, that if there's no other parties willing to join, they participate in supporting servicing through option two, and of course...
I'll move that too.
Second. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all is in favor. Opposed, motion's carried. And of course, any expansion of the system for Royston or other areas, we could continue to fund regional district upon our wire license increases.
I'll move that. Second.
And collection, yes, of course, the water cap improvement piece, okay. Move the second, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Motion's carried. Thank you staff for bringing that forward, and we'll get that approved by council hopefully in a year. Is that going to be enough time?
Yes. We'll give them advance notice as well with the committee recommendation.
Okay. Okay, so then we'll move on to, to, on staff reports, which is the request for adjustment for regional sewer requisition, so it's motion received, report.
I'll move that.
On the seat then, all is in favor. Motion's carried. I think we all know the history of this, long and short is staffing block for a recommendation to allow for that adjustment on the sewer requisition, and the amount of 2.36 million to mitigate the overcharge for the period 2004 to 2015. So, that we can move, if you wish, or if there's other questions, have a thought.
I would move it.
Second.
Question I had on that, you talk about one-time adjustment, are you anticipating that would be done all in one year, or would that be something that would happen over time?
We're leaving that open for consideration by the regional district. We, we think that, you know, it took over ten years or so of time of the city, or the town overpaying to get this figure, so, you know, we're open to recommending to council that we would take ten years to get that money back, as well, if, if that's going to ease the burden on, on the payback schedule. However, we do want to make it clear that that's the number that we're currently estimating is the, the amount that the town has overpaid.
Is that 2.36 is about half of current requisition?
Correct.
Per year, so, okay.
And of course, Courtney doesn't agree with the numbers, or have, what have they done? Have they come back and said, hang on, it's all on this, or?
At a staff level, that message has been made, that, you know, they're definitely not, not willing just to turn this money over to the town. However, we haven't, this is the first step of making the formal ask of the regional district, to fix what we believe to be an administrative error, in terms of the overcharging of the town and the undercharging of the city.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just, when I'm reading this, I'm thinking in terms of the regional district who are maintaining and running that water system, or sewer system, sorry, and they, they're the ones that put the, you know, they were supposed to be looking after it, so, are they in any way involved in this, or it's, like, we don't want the sewer commission paying, because then we're paying with thirty-five percent of our own money.
Right.
I'm just trying to play, I'm just trying to figure out how that could all play out. I guess that's between Courtney and, and the regional district, is it?
Well, at this stage, it's between the town and the regional district, in that the town and the city pay the regional district to look after the sewer system for us.
Right.
Our position is that there's been an administrative error made, in terms of how that apportionment is done, and we're not, we're not blaming Courtney, we're saying, regional district, we paid you to do this, there seems to be an error. They've admitted that there is an error, now they haven't stipulated how far back that error goes.
Yeah.
We've, we've gone and looked for information that would indicate the flows have been adjusted at some point in the past. They haven't, up until the May 2015 timeframe, so, you know, this is, this is how we've come to, to this conclusion. So, we're turning around and saying, okay, regional district, fix it.
Okay.
And that's, that's what we're saying is the first step.
Yep, fair enough.
So, yeah, this is an administrative solution, there's other possible solutions?
Correct.
But, I don't think there's any appetite on our part to engage in that, particularly the suggestion, I think that was made at one point of removing service, you know, things like that.
No, no.
No need for any of that, it's just...
No, just do the math and carry on.
We're owed money, we'd like to get paid.
Well, our taxpayers have overpaid essentially, so...
Yeah.
We should maybe underpay for a while. All right, any further? Seeing none, all is in favor. Any opposed, motion's carried. So again, that'll go to council, and then off to the regional district in a year. Okay, update?
Your worship.
Yes.
Could I ask the committee to consider a second recommendation on that item?
Okay.
And that is, if the regional district were to respond in the negative, that the town forward this matter to our lawyers?
Oh, sure. Okay.
I'll move that. Second.
I'm not against giving lawyers business. All is in favor? Motion's carried. Okay, hopefully it won't come to that.
And that's, before you close that, and that's, I take, took your comment to heart there, that, that the town would look at extending time, and helping all the reserves to repay that.
Absolutely. I mean, it, it goes without saying that, that the potential impact on the city because of this could be significant as well. So, you know, like I said, it took, it took us quite a few years to get to this point. We're willing to entertain a, a solution over the next number of years that makes it as...
That point should be made very public, and that's the reason I'm bringing it up, is that the town is quite willing to be flexible.
Well, they're actually getting a good deal, because, you know, they're doing the interest owed on this money, if you wanted to really get into it, and we're not asking for that, we're just asking for payback of what's owed, so...
Okay. All right, so, see where that goes. So, updated strategic plan, and we, as you know, engaged in a facilitated session on November 23rd, to review and improve our strap plan here at the midterm, so, this is before us for further consideration of the things to take out, or put into the strap plan, and it would go then forward to council for approval on that basis. So, that's before you hear, I'm certain you can receive it, there is a recommendation that we approve the updated strap plan, but you may wish to make that recommendation now, and then we can, we can add or subtract as a case matter.
I'll make that recommendation, okay?
All right, so discussion, any questions on the strap plan, or things you wanted to see amended, or changed further to the discussions that we had? Go ahead, councillor.
I think it's a good representation of the discussions we had, and, and I really like the process. I think that, that starting at the beginning of this term, we've been able to set a direction that you'll be able to see fruition at the end of the term, and, yeah, I think it's a very clear path clear there.
Okay, councillor McKen?
Does anything think, anyone think anything was missed?
That's why we're here. Never thought of it. I mean, it's not forever of your piece, it's obviously going to go to council in January through something, but I would hope that everyone's read this in the last few days, and checked their notes, as the case may be. I think it's fairly comprehensive, there's reference to a northeast Comarx development plan, and several respects to do with the airport parking expansion, and also just development generally, so I know there were some concerns about that. You know, since we discussed this, we had the search, fixed wind search and rescue, thing come to fruition, of course, at least, at least the announcement's been made, and we'll see what happens on an ongoing basis, but, you know, some of these things will be moving forward as we go. And it is a living, breathing document, if there's things that do come up, we always relate it back to the strap plan, and if something has to be added into it, we can. And we're hopeful very much of receiving confirmation of funding for water park and rain up for next year, so that's something that also may be news before we meet again, we'll see. So, unless there's something else.
Thank you. Yep, just a quick question, the bottom of page seventy-one there, the facade program, for some reason I thought we didn't push that forward. It was something... We talked a whole lot about it, but I thought it was one of those things where there didn't seem to be a lot of interest, and we weren't going to move it along.
Well, I think, oh, sorry, go ahead.
We haven't got a formal response back yet from the B I A, and that's why I was reluctant to take it off.
Okay, all right.
But it may be, we may be able to get direction on that early in the year.
Yeah, that was a B I A initiative some years back, that they brought to, to us and asked, and then they were hoping that we would throw money in to help it, and we were saying, they owed us, or we, we gave them, what was it, forty-eight thousand dollars in the way finding, that maybe they could use some of that to, to do that kind of thing with, and that's where all that came from, so, so it's really their initiative.
Okay. All right, seeing no other hands, all is in favor. Any opposed, motion's carried. Worked as staff and council, and for facilitation. Next item is an update, six-month review report on the downtown visualization program, so motion received, report.
Move or see?
On the seat then, all is in favor. Motion's carried. Just a quick update, I don't believe there's any presentation on this aspect of it, so there may be questions that staff have in relation to, or applications in process, or applications to come. The deadline, the current program is for submission of applications by July of 2017, and of course, if we, I passed the next recommendation, which is to extend the first amendment, so, any questions of staff from this area?
You have a very minor typo here on program financial implications, fifteen thousand six nine five zero. I think this should be the right number in there, on page two of two seventy-six.
Oh, yeah, there's too many zeros, there's a...
Yeah, an extra zero.
Should be fifteen thousand six ninety-five.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Just wanted to prove that.
Call pastor ahead to do my taxes.
All right, so, then we received it, so we are asking then staff to, staff be directed to prepare bylaw amendments for consideration in April 2017.
I'll move that.
Second, all is in favor. Motion's carried. All right, I do believe we have a presentation on the next one, so, turn it over to our planner, and planning, Jennifer.
Dr. Lawrence, zoning bylaw consolidation.
Us, are you ready?
Just, just so that the committee's aware, we are considering, and we're looking at purchasing a television for that fall, so that your back of the head stays where it belongs.
I consider adding that towards crap plan, if that's coming.
We're getting that to it, so much. All right, over to you.
So, our zoning bylaw is getting a little long in the tooth, in terms of having been many numerous times, and in terms of good practice now, being appropriate time to consolidate the bylaw amendments into one new bylaw, and we took the opportunity to look at some housekeeping amendments, in terms of areas where we were constantly having to interpret the bylaw, for the public, for staff, and so Jennifer, I took that project, and she'll give you a presentation, ask you any questions you have on that, and answer any questions you have on that, and if you have any question on the larger bylaw, or applications, I'll be happy to.
So, as Marvin was saying, I'm just here to kind of do a little presentation on the whole process, and highlight certain changes that we felt could use a little bit more explanation. So, just our presentation outline, so we're just going to go over the reasons for consolidation, which Marvin actually nicely highlighted right there, and then we're going to go onward to see what changes that we personally feel that we'd like us to have further explanation with, and then we're just going to conclude the presentation. So, again, as Marvin was saying, we are, there's, there's an increasing number of amendments to this bylaw, it was originally adopted in 2002, so obviously, fourteen years later, there's a lot of amendments, so it's difficult to keep track of changes, so through this consolidation, all those amendments will become part of that bylaw, and then we can start essentially fresh. And then, while we were also doing this, we decided to incorporate some housekeeping amendments, as Marvin was saying, there were certain aspects that we had trouble explaining to the public, or general developers, and we just wanted to help update the policy to kind of reflect the current context in the town Comarx. So, here are the changes we're going to highlight, so the dwelling unit, a couple of different things with the dwelling units, business licensing in regards to home occupations, additional definitions that we've incorporated, a three-meter setback, and this is a three-meter setback from, for accessory buildings from the principal dwelling, general diagram updates, and then the commercial zone setbacks. So, for the dwelling unit definition, we've updated to include a clause that says for a continuous period of not less than twenty-eight days. So, previously, we just had, it was occupied as the permanent residence of one related or unrelated household. So, by incorporating this, we're able to more effectively interpret what the bylaw says, because previously, the way that we were administering this, this regulation was that it was the permanent residence, so that classified as the main residence of that person, so where their mail went to, where the tax went to, so any sort of slightly temporary residence did not necessarily fit into that interpretation. So, this kind of allows for more flexibility in terms of how long a person will be able live there, without being too short. Case in point is just myself in general, as a co-op student, I've lived in five different cities, had eight different addresses in the past five years, so usually my length of stay is between four to eight months, so this kind of allows me to go in and rent from someone for a certain period of time, and actually be able to legally do it according to our bylaw. And that also takes into account just changing, changes in society, people taking shorter-term jobs, and things like that, so it gives more flexibility to it. It also takes into account that whole Airbnb aspect, so right now, of course, there's this whole surge of Airbnb, so there is certain rental aspects of it, where it's short-term versus long-term, so in this case, if the rental is for a longer term, twenty-eight days, they're able to execute it, but this also prevents them from doing, renting out an entire dwelling for a shorter term, so less than twenty-eight days, so that kind of strikes a balance in terms of allowing flexibility for those rentals, without disturbing the nature of the area, and not having a lot of people going in and out of a certain dwelling.
So, maybe, can you take questions on an ongoing basis?
Yeah, we can do that, if you'd like.
Does this number, is there any questions on, on that? The Airbnb thing, so currently we don't regulate that.
No, well, the, so our zoning bylaw, the way it's wired now, you wouldn't be able to rent out the entire dwelling unit, because it's not considered a permanent address for that person that's currently inhabiting that. And if a person was to rent out their entire house, it wouldn't be considered a B and B, because a B and B is considered just the bedroom of her house with shared kitchen area. Same with the border, border is a rental of a room, and we've also incorporated the continuous period for the border aspect, just to keep everything all...
So what you're saying, it wasn't allowed, it's not really allowed under current bylaw?
Not, not really, so you, you wouldn't be able to rent out your entire house...
Or an entire condo.
Or an entire condo, no, it's, according to the zoning bylaw, at this point, it is not permitted.
If I may just add, the, it's a double-edged sword, so what we're really worried about now is with, with all the changes that are going on, if we were to get challenged, the limitation, the statement, what is your permanent residence? So, for example, right now, we had one situation where somebody was renting a unit out to temporary workers for three months, we said, that's not allowed under bylaw.
Oh, I see.
And you are prohibited from doing that, if you want, because there are permanent residences of some or others.
Got you.
What this would mean is, in that situation, they would be fully within, fully within their rights to rent it out for that amount of time, so, but at the same time, we're a lot more confident that if somebody tries to do a one-day rental, or a two-day reoccurring rental, they'll, we're better able to enforce our, our limitations, that they can't keep that on the table. So, you mean...
I do have a question with that, so if you have a house with a legal suite, with separate bathroom, kitchen facilities, can you rent that out as an Airbnb?
Only, well, with this update, you'd only be able to do that for a continuous period of twenty-eight days, because of, as of right now, that's what is considered a dwelling unit, because it has its kitchen, its facilities, it's separate. So, at that point, now, so, right now, it's a permanent residence, so you would need to have proof that that person is using that area as a permanent residence.
For twenty-eight days, so they couldn't rent it out?
The current, the current bylaw doesn't have twenty-eight days in it, so there would be no allowance at all currently.
But for the...
What this is saying is allowing it, if it is, at least twenty-eight days.
Yes.
But for anything shorter, it's not allowed currently, and it won't be current, or it won't be under that amendment.
Yes.
Essentially, that makes a month on this.
Yeah.
And, and then you still have home occupation allowances, so you still have the ability and idea to have, and I think in a secondary, both have orders, so if you do want to have, so it's really starting to build into the difference of, we have a lot of flexibility in our existing bylaws, tremendous portions of, as well, to either borders, or in our single family zones, to bed and breakfast. But this is really getting at, it's leaving those pieces intact, and it's really tackling the idea, what happens to...
the idea, what happens, what's the rental of the entire unit, in other words, with the kitchen facilities?
Counselor Swift?
So if you have a suite, trying to figure this out, and you wanted to do an Airbnb, and you're not providing breakfast, but you wanna do Airbnb, can you do it?
In the suite?
Yeah.
Specific question?
This is gonna be a long lead.
Sorry.
Well, that's a very topical issue.
Yeah, it is.
Yes, it is, yeah, I mean, and I think somehow it's kind of going on already.
Sure is. Well, that's why.
But we're not targeting it specifically.
No, and I, I don't know if we want to, that's anyway, and I just.
So, so for example, we have the R three point two zone, our standard, our standard single family zones, it allows, bed and breakfast allows home occupations, secondary suites, and single family loans, so in terms of home occupations, that would be for both of those So both the secondary suite and the main unit, in that situation, would be allowed to have home occupation, and under a home occupation, one of the permitted uses is having not more than two borders, and a borders are where you're essentially renting a room on a, and part of this too would be that a definition of a border would be amended to say that you're renting a room for a minimum of twenty eight days to the border, so.
Short answer is, you're not allowed to do Airbnb, you won't be under this amendment, unless it's for...
Unless, unless it's as a bed and breakfast, and bed and breakfast to fully operate as a B and B, and bed and breakfast are limited to the single family dwelling, so.
So I think in answer to your questions, if there's no currently, there will be no under the amendment, all we're changing is this twenty eight thing to allow for more a month to month arrangement as opposed to a day to day Airbnb.
And so the, the purpose is, so you're not having turnover in the neighborhood?
Yes, yeah, yeah, because that seems to be, from what I can, it's just the most concerning aspect for neighbors is in and out of multiple different people within a building over a quarter span of time.
Well, I mean, there's a whole range of issues with Airbnb, they were discussed to some extent at E C M, and will continue to be discussed, and other communities have done things like business licensing, and we haven't yet received, at least here in Comox anyway, the range of complaints perhaps that Courtney's received because the hoteliers have been getting involved with this issue, yeah, and other communities as well, that's an issue of affordable housing supply, whether that's being taken up by Airbnb. Vancouver, of course, has ten thousand units, whatever Airbnb listings, and the theory is, oh, if you don't have Airbnb there, then those would be rented out and provide some housing supply. I think when Seabeds looked at it, at one point, there was three hundred listings under Airbnb for the entire Comox Valley, so how many of those are Comox Town, I don't know, you could easily find that.
So, so just to complete that question, if you wanted to get around it, as somebody...
Then just stop talking.
You just have to give them toast to everyone, right?
Well, it's hard to use, but it can't be in your suite, it has to be as part of the...
They can't have their own kitchen facilities, they have to be provided breakfast for it to classify as a B and B, and they have, there has to be a room within the house.
I mean, and it's really, it's just, all, it's not really getting around, because what it is, it's just, it's just another means of advertising then for what is historically allowed to just be a B and B. And to be clear, we have not had a problem with Airbnb, we have not had a problem, and we do get complaints in terms of enforcing, we occasionally do get complaints about people trying to use it as even single family homes as short term rentals. And all what we're trying to do here is with the changing sort of legal climate and changes in society, is trying to keep ahead of the game, and really just maintain the existing realities as we have.
So would we take a position on a house exchange?
On a house exchange?
Yeah.
I mean, for, if we got a complaint on a house exchange, then we would take a look at it, and a lot of times the house exchanges are for longer terms, right? And so, again, it tends, it also tends to be self-regulating, if you're on holidays, you're going for four weeks, five weeks, your activities tend to be a little bit more sedate than if you're going for a weekend blowout, that's when, that's where we get the complaints.
Not to make it from personal experience.
Thank you.
Put it up and say your house would indicate this.
Surprise.
So I just want for the clarification, that some communities have holiday cottages, people come and they rent for a week, so people would need to rezone to a forest accommodation zone to do that, I know in the past that was a gray area anyway.
I mean, like right now, again, you wanna rent, you wanna rent short term, or you want to rent for a little bit longer term, you have the option of a B and B, and we have very generous B and B options, so we don't have necessarily turf accommodations, because we don't have, we don't have this sort of large remote properties, so we call it a B and B, and you could then do either. If you wanted to get into, you know, having that in a separate unit, outside of the main dwelling unit, then we don't allow that, is the short answer, and then you would be within that rezone, because again, you, setting you get into a separate unit, the potential then to any kind of nuisance factors to affect the neighbors first rather than the occupant or the owner increases, and we get more complaints.
Counselor Kennedy?
Just to be, to make it perfectly clear then, I'll use an example from Canada, this concern is because neighbors did not want to have residents come and stay in a place that they, they did not know for a long period of time, and are uncertain as to who they were and why they were there.
For a short period.
For a short period of time, so my son and his wife and our granddaughter rented the top floor of a house for two weeks this past summer, and the, an elderly lady across the street told us she had concerns about it until she found out who it was, that it was a family member from...
That's your really high percentage.
But that now would not be allowed, am I correct?
Is what's allowed before you.
It's not allowed now, and it's not allowed in the future.
And, and a lot of this comes into...
That's what I wanted to just clear.
A lot of this comes into, I mean, people do a lot of things, and they do them very responsibly, and it's, we don't care about it, and, and everybody's happy with that, but when you have somebody who is acting irresponsible, irresponsible, we just need the ability to enforce the law, and that's really where we focus on, we're not, you know, even on our secondary suite policies, an illegal secondary suite, we're not sitting there trying to get somebody out immediately, we're trying to get them to comply with the regulations and look at the law.
Thank you for clarifying.
Alright, well, that's always a fun topic.
Alright, so for business licensing, we went and removed one of the clauses that limited a home occupation to one per dwelling, so the purpose of this is that it is currently, this, by excluding this provision, it's currently in line with the execution of business licensing, and it's kind of also a response to changing trends in employment, a lot more people are being self-employed, are self-employed, are working from home, and a lot of times, it is in line with the general character of a residential neighborhood, so it is office, therapist, so in the case, so for this, of course, we don't want it to go crazy and have five different home occupations in one, so there are still limitations by other provisions within the home occupations regulations, so that includes limit of size of the home occupation, so it can only be about thirty percent of the most floor area of the dwelling, and so that would include all home occupations in there, and they are also limited by the fact that any, the traffic needs to be limited to what is considered normal for that area, so obviously in a residential neighborhood, you wouldn't want an entire parking lot in front of a person's house due to their home occupation, and that is kind of also inadvertently outlined through what we actually allow as home occupation as well, so that's kind of how we decided to go about that, allowing a bit more flexibility for those who are self-employed, and still maintaining the character of neighborhoods and home occupations. Any questions for this side?
So the definition of home occupation, which goes on various things, hasn't changed, you know, hasn't changed.
It's just the one section here, so, so it is clause two of your home occupations shall, and that's just not seen more than one home occupation per dwelling.
Right, so you're just saying there could be more than one home occupation, but the actual definition, which includes fifteen different home occupations, that's not changing?
No.
Because I know in the past, there's been people who requested things like, dog grooming was one that comes up from time to time, and that's not on our list, I don't think, or esthetician, that was another one I remember.
Correct, and within procedures by law, the town did implement a streamlined processing for amendments to add to that list and a very, and a reduced fee, that I think is quite nominal, and so that was a way of intending, of expanding that on an individual basis?
That would be based on an application.
Application, and then they have reduced fee, and we will public hearing, and if there was something to be added.
Would it not be worthwhile looking at that list of uses now and modernizing it to reflect some of the things that we've heard in the past fifteen years that I've been around this table, and say, oh, you know, why, why don't we add those ones I mentioned and others, rather than requiring somebody to, you know, pay an application fee and all that, what would, why couldn't we do that as part of sort of housekeeping?
I think it would be a complex and somewhat divisive amendment, as opposed to a housekeeping amendment, and I think that that's also reflected that when we do get people in, we do get people inquiring, and we say, well, okay, well, yes, I mean, there's limits on how, how we can enforce something, so the mentioning of non-use is not creating traffic, I mean, that, that's a good guide for people, but in reality, no municipality can enforce something that big, so it really comes down on the use, and when somebody says, well, the way that I'm gonna do it is not gonna have an impact on the neighbors, we say, well, it's the use itself, and it has full broad use, and if your neighbors are fine with it, what you just simply have to do is ask yourself if you think the larger community's fine with it, and in some cases also the business community, because there's a number of people that, certain businesses are often found in home occupations, historically have in the town, and that's fine, that's a, that's been that way, and sort of playing field is leveled, other occupations, like stylists, you know, hair salons, are paying commercial rents, and that starts to raise a very large issue in terms of competition with that, with that commercial rent, so, and that's why this, this approach has been taken at this time.
Alright, so we've also incorporated a few extra definitions, so that includes balcony, deck, eaves, lining, patio, porch, and grandeur, so in this case, we were, we decided to incorporate these definitions, just because the interpretation of each of these tends to vary across different forms, between provinces, just different towns, so we found that there was difficulties in interpretation for the development of community in the town, so by defining these terms, we provided more of a specific outline for that, so that when we can implement policies such as projections or parcel coverage, we can look to these definitions and say, okay, this is what classifies as a balcony versus a deck, so that way, there's a bit more clarity, and then there's less back and forth between the town and the developer, so that kind of reduces the administration costs in that regard, as long as we can refer back to these definitions, we are able to more appropriately enforce those policies.
Thank you.
Alright, so for the, we also removed the minimum sizes for multifamily dwelling units under dwelling unit minimum sizes in the general regulations, and this is kind of just to encourage units in size more in line with the affordable housing, which is about forty five meters square, and also allow a bit more market flexibility to determine unit sizes, so rather than having a minimum size, we can let the market, and the developers aside, how they want to distribute their space in their buildings. Any questions? Okay, so this is a three meter setback, so this is for accessory buildings from the principal building, so we went and removed the three meter setback requirement for accessory buildings, this policy was a historic policy, after review of this policy, we found no sort of requirement to keep it, and we also concluded that there was no negative outcomes for restricting accessory buildings three meters from the principal building, so we decided to take away and provide more possibility for placement of accessory buildings.
So can you give us an example of what that would be, like a shed of some kind?
Yeah, so an accessory building would be a building which is used accessory to the principal building, so it would be a shed.
Could it be a garage?
Yeah, garage.
Detached garage.
Detached garage, so, and the key to that being is that the accessory building is detached, so you wouldn't be able to have an entrance directly from your building into the accessory building, otherwise that is just considered an extension of the building, so they would be closer, but it would have to be separate entrance.
It seems to me also that on a lot of cases, easements, if they're already would run along close to the back of the property line, and when you get three meters back, you start getting into the easement zone, so this would actually allow people to have a shed.
Yeah, especially on lots that are a bit smaller as well, and are still taken out by buildings, so we do have, we do still have the provisions for exclusions in certain circumstances for setbacks, but this also just gives a little bit more flexibility for those.
Frank Plein ran into that one time, that's why.
Yeah.
I remember that one.
So basically, we have no solid reasoning to just, to keep that policy, so we decided just to take it out. And some diagrams were updated to provide clarity of policy to users, so these diagrams are in the R three point two and R four point one zones, they are reflective of specific policies in the heights and stories of those zones, so in this case, it just kind of provides more contextual clarity as to what a roof ridge is in comparison to just the squares, and kind of puts it into a more clearer perspective in terms of actually visually displaying what the policy is saying, so just providing that clarity and communication for what, for utilization of the zoning regulations. And then we go to commercial zone setbacks, so setbacks were updated in the commercial zones to be in line with other commercial zones, so we have a few historic commercial zones that weren't, that were quite different from more current commercial zones, so we went about streamlining the commercial regulations just for consistency, so that when developers come, they are able to have more of an idea as to what the regulations are, and it also results in easier implementation of the policy, and by execute, by executing these changes, it's also implementation of the O C P policies, having more street oriented development in commercial zones, so some of the big changes in the historic zones, most, most of them had larger setback regulations for gas and service stations, so they were more specific to those uses, so in C one point one and C three point one, the two meter setback is a specific regulation that encompasses the gas pumps themselves, and that they would be able to be two meters back from the front setback, and then twelve is for all other uses, so instead of having that variation, we've decided just to do... So instead of having that variation, we've decided just to reduce the setback to 2.5 to match one of the more current commercial zones. And we also kept certain provisions for these zones specific to when they're adjacent to residential or uses. So the, instead of having a side interior setback to 0.0, when it affects a residential zone, the requirement would be six meters instead of just a 0.0. And yeah, those are essentially how, those are the, those are the zones that change probably the most in comparative to what they were before.
Any questions? Thank you for the presentation and for all your work on that. And I understand that you're just about finished with your work here at the town.
Yes.
Well, thank you for your service and your electing your future endeavors.
Thank you.
All right, so staff are asking for direction for the bylaw. Do you validate the zoning bylaw in accordance with this report? Want to move that? Any further discussion? Go ahead, Counselor.
I just got a question. And Marvin, you listen, appendix I and appendix S. One of them is the downtown, is the appendix I. And then S was when we changed it to include up to Stewart Street. Anyways, they don't match. I mean, they're accurate, but can you just help me understand what we're calling appendix S, I guess?
In the bylaw?
It's page 361.
Appendix S for the general town is being referenced as part of our parking standards. So it's where we have the road parking standards. So it's areas used to identify, I think we're going to get more blocking and transit usage and just...
That's three, page 351, is I.
Yeah, I'll just have to see where it's referenced in the actual bylaw. So there are references for different reasons. And just have to find that cross-reference. And I'm happy to advise you of that. You're at the end of the meeting, probably.
Yeah, no.
She's still waiting. She's still waiting to win the Comox Center.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just thought it looks confusing to me because the I is labeled downtown, but S isn't really labeled and I didn't know. I remember being at the table when we made the changes and... Anyway, carry on.
All right. We'll get clarification on that, be okay. I mean, we obviously, this bylaw will come back to council. Anything further, seeing now all is in favor? No correspondence? Do you have any camera meeting? But just before that, I just wanted to thank our Parks and Public Works crews for getting the streets and byways and sidewalks all cleaned up. And we'll see what happens over the next few weeks here with weather forecast. Good job, well appreciated. We can see lots of favorable comments. All right, we do have any camera meeting? Close of this vote, so motion to go on under section 90D. Sorry, sorry. Data, motion's carried, so a brief adjournment while on address.